So collaboration is huge with our work and the value of the team is, you know, the input of every member of the team is truly essential. So the recommendations of the team for these next three slides is on our P K to, for our K-12, our reopening recommendation. So the first three slides will be shared by Principal Dave Higgins, the President of the ADSA, as well as Principal Adam Martin of Dearborn High School. Those will be the first three slides. And then Executive Director Faraj is joining us remotely and she will run us through some of the mitigation procedures for the plan that was approved by Wayne County.
Great, thank you.
So here are the four phases. These are, this is the information that we've been waiting for. There are some tentative dates, but you see the capitalized TBD. This is all dependent, obviously, on the board's decision, looking at all of the data points relative to the health of our community. So we're looking and have recommended that K-2 start in that pattern, the grades three to five, preschool would be phase three with again a TBD. And they, phase four, second semester, our secondary schools would return. So during this period of time, again, pending positivity, the plan would be to continue to run both virtual and in-person learning labs. So I'm going to ask Mr. Higgins to come up and talk a little bit more about the elementary reopening plan.
Good evening, President Barry, trustees, Dr. Maliko. Pleasure to be here tonight. Just want to follow up real quick on the learning labs because we did transition out of learning labs from in-person, most of them. There were a few, but to your answer to that question, I think trustee Moser, if you had asked about the virtual learning labs, and we have had, you know, I'm going to speak representing ADSA elementary principals, that those are happening all afternoon. And I would say the goal of most of our teachers is to touch base in a small group or one-on-one with, with their students, every student, daily, whether that's following a whole group lesson in the morning, or that's a learning lab in the afternoon. So, so from an elementary perspective, our numbers were, it's interesting to watch them during, when we had in-person learning labs that were taking place, I think my numbers were about 95% that were attending and the car would stop, sometimes not all the way, and those kids were flying literally out of the cars to get to the building. So with masks on, if they didn't, I had noon hours at the door, turning them around to make sure they had the mask on. So I just wanted to mention that from the learning lab perspective. So, so today, or tonight, I'm here representing elementary principals from the ADSA, and I had shared a letter with Dr. Maliko, and I believe he shared it with you. So we're going to look at really, there was three kind of plans on there, but really the plan that I'm going to discuss tonight is the hybrid model. Coming back and do I just get the, yes. So, and this has really been a collaborative effort of all elementary principals, meeting sometimes through the, with all the executive factors, as well as at other times, meeting on our own, within subcommittees, looking at special areas, looking at arrival dismissal, even the cleaning and working with Mark and Gary and such. It's really been a collaborative effort. But beyond elementary principals, we have also tapped into input and feedback from, from teachers. And that's been key, having just informal and formal conversations with teachers and, and through staff meetings and such, about what do they believe is the, the best model for us to use? And kind of following President Barry, the direction last time from, you know, the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday with the Wednesday model. And so that's where a lot of that discussion stemmed from. But I also want to add that a lot of our feedback and input, when we got to this, is from students and parents and hearing from them and about what they also believe works. And obviously their desires to be back in classroom, okay, obviously. But, so even hearing from them, and I think it was really important that I mentioned. So as has been mentioned, we'd have two groups and alphabetically, and I go back to trustee Polichoff, when you mentioned about the transportation. It is also an issue within the building. It's not going to necessarily work perfectly if we go alphabetically that way to make two perfect groups. So we would have to, that's a, something, a logistic that we're used to, so we would manage that to make sure we do get even groups. And that also, working with our engineers and through, through Gary Shelby, to look at our rooms and look at the square footage of the rooms, and even have teachers experiment with setting up tables and desks in a room to make sure it works. And you, you know, so for instance, I have a fifth grade teacher who took her classroom, and I said, hey, go experiment with and play with, can you do six feet in between? And she said, yes, I can fit 14 in. Perfect, she's got 26 kids, so it can work with a six feet in all directions in her classroom. And that's one of our smaller classrooms at William Ford. Now, I know some of the schools, the older buildings, some of the, the rooms are a little bit smaller, but that is one of the smaller rooms at William Ford. So we have been experimenting even with that component when we looked at the two different groups that we're working with. So the two different groups, Group A, in theory, would be Monday and then Thursday, and Group B would be Tuesday and Friday. Those would be their live days. Now, the alternate day is when they would have an asynchronous day at home. So again, we believe that was the, so Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday. We thought that was most educationally, instructionally sound for our students because then the Wednesdays, what we would like would have to be like a day like we currently have, a virtual synchronous day with our morning, two morning live lessons, and then our afternoon where we, we touch base again with an afternoon quick lesson after 12:30, and then where they then have the afternoon asynchronous, kind of like they currently do now. But they are also learning labs that take place, virtual learning labs, small group settings and such. So Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, whole group on Wednesday. So it would be three solid days. On the opposite asynchronous day, I'm sorry, yeah, opposite asynchronous day, when they are at home, and that afternoon, there's even some discussion about the teachers touching base, although briefly, with those kids who are asynchronous at home. So then you're at least touching base, although briefly on those days in the afternoon, at least touching base with them five days a week. The day is a four-hour day, the way we currently have it planned, would be approximately nine to one. And the reason behind that was to really honor the work of teachers. I know that was mentioned last board meeting as well, about the planning that's going to take to do a live day, as well as an asynchronous day. So that gives them some additional planning that afternoon, but it also is an opportunity on those off days to touch base with those students who've had a day at home asynchronously. So we will maybe have to relook at that when we come back with the middle school and high school to kind of blend those together, and it could be extending those hours. So as I mentioned, the Wednesday is the synchronous day. And then breakfast, we would do in the classroom. We do our, need to have at least one meal during the four-hour day, and that would be breakfast. We'd either get it, there's a variety of ways we could do that, whether it's delivered to the classrooms, or they pick it up on their way in, depending on the size of the building and such. So the breakfast would be in the room, and then again, debate as to how they would do lunch. I know Josh and Jeff are working on that, whether that would be done, taking something, a box lunch home, or just to continue to do the distribution sites like we currently have and doing the lunches that way. So that's still to be debated, but for sure, breakfast would be there. So a typical in-person day would probably have like a 90-minute ELA lesson, a break, probably a 75 to 90-minute math lesson, probably a break, and then break being like 10-minute brain break or whatever, maybe a walk around the track, weather permitting, of course, and then a science and social studies or writing in, before the, before the one o'clock dismissal. So that in a nutshell is kind of what we're looking at here as our elementary plan.
Yes, she goes, go.
Couple of questions. One, preschool is mentioned in here. Most preschool students, did they sign up for preschool already, or did a lot of people kind of say, eh, if it's going to be virtual, I'm not going to bother with it?
I can't speak specifically on that, but I do believe that our preschool numbers are where they currently, they always have been. In fact, I have added an additional preschool room at William Ford. I'm going to have two, really excited about that. So yes, and they're ready to go as well. They're handing out materials, they've had drive-bys with materials as well for them as well, yes.
And the other thing is, any of the specials, gym, music?
Okay, great question. Yeah, so right now, with this four-hour schedule, what we're looking at is to continue to do our specials. There is still, there is still discussion on that. This isn't a done deal, for sure, but right now, we're trying to kind of maintain that block area of the four hours, the days we're there. And then the specials, kind of like they are right now, right now, they are currently like a recorded activity in the afternoons, but a lot of the special area teachers, or most, I should say, are either pushing in into a live lesson in the mornings right now, or they may be not really co-teaching, but they're pushing in at some, in some capacity. And then after the recorded lesson in the afternoon, most afternoons, they have opportunities for specific classes to touch base one-on-one with the special area teacher.
So it'll still be virtual though?
It would be still at this time, as of right now, but that's still to be discussed, yeah.
Okay.
Trustee Tor.
Since the kids would be having breakfast, is that taking away from the instructional time?
Well, you know, it's interesting you ask, you say that because it's, I'm watching in on a virtual class today I was in, as they were doing like a review of the yesterday's lesson, and the kids were eating breakfast while that was happening. So it's kind of like, you know, part of it, so I can maybe see that happening. And you're talking, we're probably looking at 10 to 14 kids max in the room, having their breakfast, maybe it's a review of things, maybe it's a, you know, that kind of thing at the beginning of the day, whether it's reviewing, not that there's necessarily seat work, but reviewing the day and having the breakfast. So I, you know, we're pretty good in the elementary level, in all levels, I should say, for multitasking, and that's one way.
A second question is, we're talking about four hours a day, and I've heard from working parents that half-days are not going to make things any easier on them. In favor of the four-hour day, though, you mentioned for the teachers, that gives them additional time to be reaching out to the students that weren't in class today or preparing lessons. Is, is this going to make things easier for the teacher, doing this type of hybrid approach, or are they going to be working double-time for the kids that are in person and the kids that aren't?
Well, yeah, that's a good point. And so I think what we're doing by extending that time, by ending at one o'clock, is honoring, like I mentioned, the, the teachers' need for planning, planning live lessons, planning the asynchronous lesson, as well as, I'm speaking probably just on the behalf of my teachers, the need for them to touch base with those kids who've been home, doing asynchronous during the day. So it is a lot of work, but I would think the same thing they're doing right now. I had a, a teacher today asked me, I'm trying to do like six learning lab groups back-to-back-to-back in the afternoon, is it okay if I extend that break from three minutes to five minutes? Like, oh my gosh, and I mean, seriously, that's the kind of effort they're putting in. I can't tell you, I mean, you should, if, I know Dr. Maliko's done the same and joined some of these classes, but it's amazing to watch the ingenuity, the, the passion, the compassion, the creativity that they have with these new platforms in such a little amount of time, you know? So I, to answer your question, I think they're, they're up for it. They know it's important to them. It, it's all been a challenge until we're back full-time.
Any other questions, Ms. Higgins?
Can I, can I, I have one more thought about, because I have seen other districts doing this version, except for the A students are Monday, Tuesday, and then Wednesday's a really deep clean, and then the other group is Thursday, Friday. And they're separating them that way with the thought, if there is a, an issue with a case cropping up, you've got those kids all co-horted at the same time, and you're not mixing another group of kids that has to be quarantined also from another cohort in the same room. So if you did it A-day Monday, and the same group of kids was there on Tuesday, and somebody was ill on Monday, it would, wouldn't, you wouldn't be exposing a whole nother group of children on the Tuesday. Is there a reason why you separated, just to?
Yeah, I, well, this was a big topic amongst elementary principals, and I know it was, for me, my perspective, I was, I was just envisioning that I see my, the six-year-old or five-year-old on Tuesday, and I'll see him again until the following Monday. And that was concerning to me, and then you're looking at, especially for a younger five or six-year-old, the Thursday and Friday, that it's completely asynchronous. And trying, as a, as a former classroom teacher for nearly 20 years, I'm trying to envision what that would look like, planning from, from my perspective. The other thing, I, I'm, you know, I really trust on the, what Gary and Mark have said about the cleaning and what they're doing in between.
Yeah, I do too.
I mean, and you know, even our learning labs right now, for that matter, I mean, if I had learning labs coming back-to-back, when they leave, there's like a 25-minute time in between where they're coming in and doing a cleaning. My custodians, my engineer get the same schedule, and they come through with the cleaning, and they do all that. I haven't seen them use the Ghostbusters pack yet, but I, that's after school.
You have to hang around.
Yeah, but during the day, so, you know, I, I, I trust that that cleaning has been, been done.
Is doing, yeah.
And then the overnight, I mean, when we leave at, at, you know, 3:50, my custodians are there, and they're cleaning that building thoroughly. And I know it was mentioned before, but I wish, and I know David must have mentioned perhaps doing so was having a video done of what it looks like entering and exiting our buildings, and the, the masks that the students have, and parents are not coming in. And, you know, it's just, I mean, unless they need to have business in the office, of course, but, and then they're checked in. I mean, the protocol that we're running, it is, it's, it's pretty impressive, so. I, I trust that our cleaning is doing the right job, but I understand that. I just, instructionally and educationally speaking, I just really would have a, I think it was a challenge.
Yeah, and I, and the only reason I wanted to bring it up is because I know people are comparing us to what other districts are doing, so I wanted to.
Usually people follow our lead.
To ex, to expose what, the reasoning behind why you've chosen this scheduling.
Right.
Trustee Petricoff, if I asked that same question last week, and Dr. Maliko shared with me, the principals' thoughts about this, their concern about the students, I'm good.
Yeah, and I am too.
I appreciate that.
But I just wanted to make sure that it was clarified for, for the parents out there who might have been looking at others.
You know, we, we've been open to everything, with some of the challenges, to see what everyone's done, we've just gone with it. We really have, and it's just been amazing, and you still have the support of the community. I mean, that's the, the, what I hear. I'm not getting your emails, maybe. I'm getting incredibly positive emails and feedback from parents, at least in the William Ford community.
Please share some of those with us.
Yeah, please.
I will.
We could use, we could use a little positivity.
They're very appreciative, so.
What you said is very valuable, that, yeah, Dearborn leads.
We do.
We made a decision early on that we're going to crawl in this, we're going to go very slow. The easy decisions would have been, let's just call it a semester and move on, or just open up the schools and gamble. But I think honestly, there's no doubt in my mind that we're doing all the right things.
Well, and I had mentioned that in the letter, and for those who didn't see the letter, of course, that that was, got way back when David and Glenn had interviewed Adam and Rima Hassan and myself about coming back, and I mentioned that quote in the letter, and you had a question, how's it going? And Rima's response was, well, we are Dearborn, you know, and so we know what to do, you know? So I think that's a, you're, you're right. We, we go with it, and we do what's best for our kids, always.
Yeah.
I had a family that I've been communicating with this past couple of months, and, you know, and she's, the mother was very persistent. She wanted her kids back in school, and she said, if we don't get them in school soon, I'm going to have to pick up and move. And I got a text message today that she did. So parents, no doubt in my mind that they know what's right for their children. We don't want to discourage anybody from doing what they believe is right.
Right.
But, yeah, you're right. I was just making a joke to share some of those comments. I get, we, we all get, we all get a lot of, you know, negative emails, but some, most of them are positive, so, you know, so, thank you. Trustee Moser, before I get to Dr. Maliko?
I just had a question about the K to two, and then three to five. If it's that split down the middle, like how, how did you come to say that we can break it into two halves?
Well, I think it was kind of like we, even the way we're phasing ourselves back in, and with the learning labs, there's been a little bit of sampling of our kids coming in. I'm just trying to envision if it would have been K-5, although some people were like, let's, if let's do it, let's get it on then. Even that, half of my building is 325 kids.
Right.
So that would have been, you know, a little bit much.
Size of the number.
We wanted to get, ease it in, so the K-2, we thought to start with, and then the three-five, and then the preschool, I think, is the, the phase three, which is still to be determined.
Trustee Moser, we had a long discussion about this last meeting.
Yes, we did.
K through, you know, K first and second, that's pretty much like, you know, go back to numbers, that's about 40 to 42% of your students, so get them in there, work out some kinks, not that we want to use the wrong ones.
No, there'd be kinks to work out, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, we know there will.
I can't imagine logistics that the administrators have to go through. I can't even try to think about it, and I.
We've never done this before.
No.
Some amazing work being done in this district these few months, so, thank you, we appreciate.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
President Barry, as.
Yes, well, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine. As, I'm going to ask Mr. Martin to come up, I know we're cleaning a thing, and as I'm, I'll speak as he comes up on to talk about the next slide.
Please.
I want to just mention something on that as well, and yet, I mean, we appreciate the great work of the principals, and I appreciate, and all our administrators, and David has been with us with the committee and providing leadership and guidance, and, you know, they really are, and they, they felt very strongly about this. The other practical thing is, I do want to go back to what, you know, David said, and I know you said, we trust, we have to trust in the cleaning, so it's more, because what, what happens is, that evening, who was exposed to who in the evening? So really, the cleaning is much more important than the cohort, because if they were exposed to someone, you still, so even those.
They're in there, yeah.
Yeah, even those schools that may say, okay, well, the, and I just got to keep this down.
That's why I keep mine on. I don't want to bother with them.
Anyway, it, you know, we have to, I think we have to rely more on the cleaning versus the cohort from day to day, because we, you know, and those schools that may, I don't know which ones they are, but just, you know, they would still have to be doing, it would not alleviate any additional cleaning that they must do because of the cohort. So I just wanted, on a practical side, that that came up as well, so.
Thank you.
But it's all good points.
You guys ready, ready for me?
Yes.
President Barry, trustees, Dr. Maliko, thank you for having me. I just want to say and echo the sentiments that you saw from the, or heard from the teacher, and also teachers, and also from Mr. Higgins. Our best day so far this school year at Dearborn High was our SAT day, because kids were in the building. So we're all looking forward to that day, but we also recognize the brevity of the decision that you guys are making here, so appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you, certainly. And I will tell you, these conversations, the return to school and what that looks like, really, it kind of stopped third week of August and picked right back up second weekend of, second week of September, once we got everybody in. What are we going to do, and what does that look like in terms of getting kids back? So I know two weeks ago, there were three different options that were presented. I will tell you, from the high school's perspective, we're kind of letting the, the elementaries take the lead in what that looks like, but I want to encourage you that that framework can, can work at the high school, and I'll share a little bit about that. But all of this has come through collaboration with administrators and teachers. So first and foremost, our ninth graders have never been in our buildings, our sixth graders have never been in our buildings. So we missed out on opportunities in the spring and opportunities at the beginning of the year to get them in. So first and foremost, that would be something that we would want to do. Once we were given a date or given an idea of when that might occur, we will feverishly start maneuvering ourselves to figure out the best way to do that. At Dearborn High School, or at all the high schools, we have a, a pretty large, substantial link crew that works, that's our upper classroom, class, upperclassmen that help with our ninth graders. They've all, they're all chomping at the bit too, to, to be able to help in that process. So first and foremost, getting sixth and ninth graders in there is a priority. Second thing is, and this is, I'm speaking on behalf of the secondary principals, I only had this black and orange, I chose not to wear black and orange because this is a ADSA or a secondary principal thing. The soonest that we, we were recommending second semester at the soonest for the secondary schools. And large, a large part of that has to do just with scheduling constraints. So right now, our virtual learning program students are embedded with our non-virtual students in remote. So when we do return, those virtual program students are going to have to be pulled out of our, kind of out of our master schedule, and we're going to have to create a new schedule for them and staff it. That takes time. In addition to doing that, our master schedule that we had built at Dearborn High for 2,100 kids is going to be less, 350 kids and, and some teachers, which means we're going to have to totally overhaul that schedule. And that process, really for us, every year begins in March or April, and really isn't done until almost the second week after school begins, because we're still making moves. So in order for us to be able to do that in a efficient way, and to give everybody the, the most amount of time to be able to do that, six weeks is kind of the minimum. Middle school's a little bit less, but certainly, if today you guys said, hey, you guys are heading back as soon as you can go, six weeks from today is December 7th. So December 7th would give us 10 days before the holiday break, and then we'd come back for two weeks, and then we'd start second semester. So the word that's been used here is consistency. The value of having kids in front of us for 10 days, then off for two weeks, then five days, then final exams, in our opinion, is not worth changing the consistency. The other piece is, that does give us more time in terms of scheduling, to make sure that come second semester, our schedules are locked tight with students, because that process, once we build a master schedule, we hit load, and all the kids are added into classes, but that's not perfect, and we have to go in and hand-schedule kids, and sometimes there's specific requests or classes that frankly, we have to change, manipulate a student's schedule to get them all the classes that they want. So our recommendation for the secondary schools is to begin for second semester, which would be January 19th, if the numbers are where they're supposed to be at that point. Also, similar to what Mr. Higgins said about dividing into groups to allow for six feet of social distancing, certainly, the ideal world would be two groups. I know last, two weeks ago, there was an option for three groups. The, the consensus was, that's going to be pretty disruptive also, whether it's a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then a kid would come back Thursday, Friday, Monday, or Monday, Wednesday, Friday. The, we're hopeful that the numbers will be right in terms of the amount of kids that are attending the virtual program, and the amount of kids that we would have left to be able to do two groups as well. That would be consistent for families as well, because we could do that for, by household if we do it alphabetically as well. So there will be some consistency there. Students would attend in-person for a reduced day. I know elementary is going for four hours, and there are going to be a language arts block, a math block, science or social studies, and then elective at the high school, and we would be able to see our students in all six periods across that time. And that's a big, big win for us, that's something Mr. Higgins also talked about, of being able to see our kids regularly and support their, and support their learning. For the students that aren't in building, they would be assigned asynchronous work, and then on Wednesday, just like the elementaries, it'd be a full synchronous day where you would see all of your classes through Zoom. Lunch or breakfast would be provided as students would be coming in. Lunch and breakfast for the virtual days at the pickup sites are still something that would be provided, and the goal there really is just to, to get kids in as much as we can. What you heard from the learning lab, the teachers talking about the learning lab is how rich, and those golden moments where you have a teachable moment. It's very difficult to do that, especially at the secondary level, virtually when screens are off. So we are missing those opportunities, but we understand the reason why. We're hopeful that come second semester, we'll have the ability to get, get back in, and we're really going to lean on the elementary model and framework as we continue to build ours. I will tell you, we are currently reflecting on how to improve engagement with our current structure, which may, may end up in a modification of what we currently have, but we're, we're seeking input from our, our teachers and collectively as a secondary group, trying to do what's best for kids to maximize those learning opportunities. But that's all I have, unless you guys have specific questions for me.
Trustee Petricoff.
One of the things I've seen that some of the recommendations are out there is, instead of having kids transferring from classroom to classroom, you have the teachers push it, and you keep the kids in the same room so that you don't have that hallway.
Yeah.
Interaction. Are you considering that, or is, or is that, that'd be awful difficult, I understand, with the size of our, our school buildings and, and the layouts.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be impossible to do, frankly.
Yeah.
We have so many kids, so, yeah, we have so many kids that change schedules and have different teachers, that'd be, it'd be impossible to do. We don't have, the only, the only, that might be more doable at the middle school than at the high school, because they all kind of have theoretically a more standard schedule, but once you get to the high school, there's so many variations. And I will tell you too, you know, our kids are the most independent, but they oftentimes are the most responsible as well. With the SAT, we had, we had zero issues. The kids came in, they were staying on the right-hand side of the, the hallways, they were wearing masks, you know, through our athletics this fall. We've had kids out there, certainly, like Dr. Maliko said, they're not always doing what they're supposed to do with masks and wearing them, but certainly, they're doing, they're making the best effort to follow the protocols as we have. It's certainly not going to be perfect, and never is, but I feel pretty confident in our high school students that they'd be able to manage those transitions between classes in an appropriate and responsible way, especially considering that, out of our total population, once you, once you remove the virtual learning students, you're probably at about 45% of what our normal capacity is, a lot smaller, right? And we still have 100% of the staff there to support them. So I feel pretty confident that, that we would be able to still do that in a, in a safe way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Thorpe.
A decision was made before school started that for the high schoolers, we were no longer gonna have the class starting, or classes starting at 7:15, got pushed back to 8:15, and that's asynchronous time, they go synchronous later. Um, what feedback have you gotten from the students? Does it, when we go back to in-person, you think they'd probably like to keep some schedule along that line and not have to show up at 7:15?
So I think most high schoolers would like to not start the day until 1:00 PM, actually.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Um, yeah, so, so, trustee Thorpe, you bring up a good point. Um, I, I do think there is value there in looking at pushing things back. Um, Mr. Andrews talked about the three-tiered, um, and needing to be separated by 45 minutes, really, in order to, to provide transportation. Um, so outside of what kids would say and outside of what I would say, um, research is pretty clear that, um, physiologically, high schoolers, uh, waking up at 6:30 isn't the most conducive to their learning. Um, and if you visit any first hour class versus a third hour class, you can actually absolutely see that qualitatively. So, yeah, I, I'm, I'm a big proponent of starting a little bit later.
Uh, another question for you is that I'm figuring we're eight or nine weeks into this semester.
Yep.
What are you seeing both from the students and the staff? How are we doing on the learning curve? Are, are we getting it, are things getting better? Is it still too, or too hard for both the students and for the staff?
So that's, that's one piece that I've told Dr. Malekow, like, uh, two weeks, uh, it was last week, um, is the first week where I think people have started to settle in. Um, certainly with the afternoon synchronous work, the Zoom, um, we're seeing a lot of positives there. Uh, where we don't know and where we're concerned about the efficiency and effectiveness is that three-hour asynchronous window in the morning. Um, and as I said, with the group, uh, revisiting what's going on and, um, if there's some modifications to, to be made, um, a lot of, a lot of teachers have said, I'm a little bit concerned with that asynchronous time. Um, so that, that would be, that would be the one place, uh, that we might look at, um, in terms of modifying things a little bit. Uh, I do think kids and teachers have kind of settled in. Um, there's another piece too, we did move back our synchronous time to 12 to 3, so I know families in the community have kind of settled into that structure as well. So again, in these tumultuous times where you don't know what's going on, um, consistency is very important. And, and that's one of the, one of the reasons why, you know, we're, we're asking or recommending second semester at the earliest for us, just so we can make sure our schedules are locked tight, and we've been really thoughtful in everything that we're going to do.
I didn't have the twisters on too hard for that late start, which you know I would support.
No, I know.
Trustee Moser.
Do you anticipate transportation issues if we're doing reduced days then? Especially for special programs like the CMST and?
Um, transport, I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Do you anticipate transportation issues then if we have a reduced day?
No, um, similar to, uh, what Mr. Andrews answered about busing, uh, so, I don't know how the district is gonna determine groups, right? But if we have, if we have two groups, so one thing that I would like to say is, whatever we going, uh, we're going to do, it's not going to be perfect, right? We can, we can design it for 50% and 50%, um, but that structure to support efficiency and consistency for families isn't going to be guaranteed in every building or across buses. Um, so what I, what you have to accept is there is gonna be some variability there. Uh, but I don't see it, uh, being an issue, um, you know, if, if, if the 50% cut point for my student population is, let's say, last name E, right? Um, certainly, there's gonna be some buses that might have a little bit more, some buses that might have a little less, some classes that might have a little more, um, some classes that have a little less, uh, because there's no way
You can't.
to, to, to guarantee it, right? Um, but the goal there is being flexible, understanding, following all the protocols, right? And looking at this as a, as an opportunity to return to school, which I know everybody is, um, eagerly anticipating.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions? Great, thank you very much, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, guys.
I just want, I, I just want to thank Mr. Martin for the great work, and again, he's representing the secondary, and we appreciate their professionalism, and thank you.
President Barry?
Yes, sir.
One quick point for, uh, I don't know, Dr. Malekow, if you want to handle this or not. With, uh, the recommendations being more of a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, is there a chance we would need to adjust the calendar for half-days that might have been scheduled for, call it a Friday? Because I think pre, professional development might have happened on Fridays, so we're gonna try to move those things maybe to a Wednesday. I know DFT was good about, since there weren't open houses, giving more time maybe for parent-teacher conferences. But have we already started considering that?
Yeah, we, we can look at that, we've made some modifications, as you mentioned, and we, we can look at that, if, depending on when we start for the students, and definitely open to modification.
Yeah, I think the calendar is gonna be.
Even the, yeah, the start of the year, as you're aware, we changed the first week to allow all these half-day PDs because we need, we knew, professional development, excuse me, because we knew we needed it. Um, so I think for sure we can be flexible with that.
Sure, it's a good point, trustee Thorpe, let's get to this question, yeah, good. We thanked, uh, DFT for their cooperation throughout this. Dr. Choco, you got the floor again?
I'm back.
You're back.
Um, I am going to ask Executive Director Ms. Farage to walk us through the next few slides as she led the district through the development of an approv, approved mitigation plan, so Ms. Farage?
I'm.
You're muted.
We can't hear you.
Thank you for the reminder. Good evening, uh, President Barry, board trustees, Dr. Malekow, and the entire community. I am happy to present the fifth plan that we must submitted so far since the pandemic started. As you can see and you know that we have to submit, um, moving forward, we're gonna submit one summary on a monthly basis after each of the board meetings. Uh, so we know from the Michigan Safe Schools Roadmap and the Michigan Safe Start Plan, they both recommend that we have to consult with the Wayne County Department of Health, uh, for recommendations, which resulted in Wayne County developing what we call today the mitigation plan. The mitigation plan was, uh, was completed, uh, in collaboration with, uh, I'm gonna say all departments in the district, along with central office departments and staff. As we were drafting the plan, it was really, uh, pleasant to see that any time we looked at one of the strategies, the 11 mitigation strategies, each one has somewhere from 10 to 15 components. And as we were going through these as a central office team, and we're looking to see if, are we implementing this? Do we have, for example, a poster for this specific requirement? Or do we have, uh, a plan to implement this specific area? We had found that the learning lab had been a great field study for us, or field experience to implement those specific strategies. Uh, Dr. Choco will click on the 11 mitigation strategies, and you have seen many different slides today that demonstrated the application of those, uh, strategies. They are 11, and they range from personal protective equipment such as face covering to how do we respond to positive, uh, tasks among staff and students. Uh, we, we had discussed transportation, uh, quarantine room, uh, hygiene. Uh, we heard about sanitizing, um, products, and we heard about, uh, how we clean every four hours, or how do we clean in between, uh, period and period for students. So all of these strategies are in place, we are happy to say they are in place in Dearborn Public Schools. It's not that we've only, uh, completed the plan and submitted it, um, we've experimented with them. Uh, so, um, it was approved by Wayne County Health Department, uh, and the Wayne County Health Department has also adopted a scoring rubric that we also experimented with. Although we cannot score ourselves on the plan, but they do give us a point value for each of the components under each of the strategies. And if we were to, uh, bring students back based on the plans that were presented earlier, and the students were separated, uh, from four to six foot, social distancing, we would score 96 out of 100. If students were, uh, social distanced with six feet or six foot, uh, distancing, we would score 100% on those. Uh, the Wayne County Health Department Division will monitor compliance of the plan. And as you have seen, the work of the nurses in the district, the work of the maintenance department, uh, the school principals, entry-exit, uh, screening of the students, the consent form that is sent home uh, for the parents to sign for learning lab, these are all part of this mitigation plan. Moving on to the next slide, uh, we did include some examples of the strategies such as the entry-exit procedures, um, uh, having students enter through multiple doors, for example. These were very specific examples that we included. Uh, procedures for, uh, dropping off students and picking up students, screening by parents at home. Uh, what do we do with lockers? When students are walking, walking in the hallways, they are walking in one-way, uh, direction, uh, backpacks. Uh, all of these are scaled out. Again, next slide please. Uh, classroom capacity was discussed, and that is part of, uh, breaking the students into groups, A group and B group, uh, floor and hallway markers. Um, even in the office where there is, uh, typically, a group of students waiting, uh, to be, uh, served or anything like that, these are all areas where we're gonna have markers. Uh, students remain in classrooms for academics and do not switch for specials, for example. That's one of the strategies in the plan. Uh, engineers went around, we did walkthroughs through all the middle schools and high schools, the principals, the engineers, and the staff has been involved in measuring the rooms to see how many students would fit. Uh, Mr. Martin and Mr. Higgins, uh, have mentioned that certain classrooms are smaller than the others, and we've experimented on how many students the rooms would fit so that we can socially. All the conversations have been centering around social distancing for six feet. But again, um, many districts that have returned in person so far, they've been doing the three to six feet social, social distancing, but our conversations have been centering around six feet social distancing. Quarantine room, as part of the walkthroughs, when Ms. Peterson, Dr. Choco, myself, Mr. Andrews, uh, and the school principals and engineers, that's one of the, uh, areas that we asked for. They were identified in every single building that we walked through. And, um, and the plan specifies the, uh, the quarantine room, and what are the guidelines for that specific room in each building? It should be accessible to the parent to pick up the student. Students should not be using the district transportation, uh, if they were to be sent home after they had developed any symptoms or displayed or exhibited any symptoms. Uh, we're, make sure that we make it comfortable and supportive for students. Principals have been sending us pictures, they've been asking questions about these specific rooms. A staff member will be in the room no longer than 15 minutes, and the staff that monitors this room must, must wear an N95 mask. Students will be wearing masks, uh, as well. That would be it about the mitigation plan, any questions?
Trustee Lane?
For staffing, uh, the quarantine room, um, I'd like to know how staff will be assigned? Will there be a list, or, I assume that we'll take volunteers first?
Um, in each of the building, it may be, uh, a different person assigned based on, it doesn't have to be a teacher, it could be any employee, that, that, that the principal would identify as a person who would be responsible for that room. It would be, uh, it could be, um, a parent-community liaison, it could be a teacher or, uh, communities in school personnel. Uh, it does specify in different guidance that this could be any person trained and, uh, as well as, uh, available to support in that room.
So the staff will have training though, on, see?
Yeah.
And?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead.
Part of the mitigation plan also is to provide training videos, uh, posters, um, different guidance for different staff doing different responsibilities.
Uh, if a parent can't pick up a child, what do we do?
We had discussed.
In the quarantine room, that is.
Correct, that's a very good question. We did discuss that it's either going to be, um, we could use district transportation for those specific cases, or we could have, um, it does even mention the, the ambulance sometimes. If it's a severe case and the symptoms are very severe. So we have to be very intentional and very, uh, careful, um, how to identify the transportation method for the student based on the specific scenario. It could be, uh, a person from the school or an, uh, an employee from the school wearing the N95 mask. And the Wayne County guidance says that we have to find transportation in case the parent is not available, and we have to define how to transport that. But it's very di, difficult to put a specific person in the plan, because that might be available in one school but not the other. So the school principal will seek guidance from the executive director, and we will find a way to do that along with, uh, in, in consultation with the nurses as well.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Trustee. Trustee McDonald.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes, um, Ms. Farage, when I was looking through the mitigation plan that was submitted and approved, I cheated a little bit, and I went and looked at the things that we were knocked down for. We weren't knocked down much, but we were knocked down a few points here and there. And what I noticed is they had to do with spacing. And I understand that you said we're, we're really trying to do the six-foot of spacing. Um, but one of the things that I read was there was a recommendation that if there's a staggered schedule, that we should look to partner with community organizations to identify safe spaces where kids can engage possibly virtually, especially if the parents are, are working and, uh, they don't have a space at home available. Has that been done, are we looking into that?
In terms of community organizations, we have not done that, and these.
Okay, or safe spaces in general?
Say, that would also require a location other than the school building, when we talk spaces, because that become virtual if it's through Zoom or any other, um, uh, I would say, uh, but if, if teachers are teaching through Zoom, then it, it is no longer in-person learning. So that would hike the synchronous learning that's happening at home. Uh, but again, the only area that we scored lower, lower than, um, the threshold or that expected score was the three to six foot, social distancing. And that, after looking at several plans, uh, around, and also looking at the guidance, and it, the, the, if one of the areas we cannot get the higher score, we get to explain why and the reasoning. And then, um, that's why the score for reopening in person is 80 to 100. So if you score anything higher than 80, the county, uh, recommendation is we can go back face-to-face. Given the, the recommendations that the nurses have shared before are in place, like the positivity rate, the numbers and all of them. Now, the Wayne County Department says if you score below 80, they will work with you. To look at the areas where you scored lower and brought you below 80, and then, um, they can work with you to, to give you some advice on, uh, how to tweak these areas or how to accommodate for these specific areas. But I can tell you right now, going through the entire rubric and all the elements as a team, um, we, we've spent hours on that, and we were emailing Gary and Mark and the nurses and the principals, hey, do we have this in place? Link it here, or do we have that in place? So we really, uh, did find that we are prepared to go back in person, given that, that we are not in the orange on that rubric, or given that the, the parameters that the nurses explained earlier are, are in place. The only, wanted to mention is the six-foot social distancing. Last, last time when we presented at the board meeting, we put four to six in the, on the presentation, we wanted to be transparent with the parents, but that's with full implementation of face covering, which is also the first mitigation strategy in the plan.
Okay, a couple of things specifically, again, to spacing that I read in there, uh.
You froze, trustee McDonald.
Go to trustee Petricoff, you have a question?
Well, well, uh, Ms. Farage kind of answered it, because. Well, well, Ms. Farage kind of answered it because I was going to say the lack of being able to maintain the six-foot.
Service lunches?
Oh.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to maintain, but it particularly concerns me in a cafeteria setting that we must have six feet because kids are removing their masks to eat. So I think it's imperative in that setting that we have to maintain at least a six-foot spacing.
I wanted to also bring up that all the planning that we've been doing and all the plans that have been presented today and the conversations are based on six-foot social distancing. We are, are below six feet, but we did it just in case. We wanted to be flexible with our planning in case that, let's say the positivity rate is 2.1, that's, that's a good number. And if we're able to do that moving forward, we wanted to put it there as a question for us to be able to move forward.
So it's a non-issue then?
It is a non-issue and it's not part of the plan that we are doing less than six.
Okay, good.
Groups, and we're waiting for virtual numbers.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Trustee Petrichoff?
Okay, what I was saying is, is if we have an inability to maintain, the face coverings are supposed to be an offset to some degree for mitigating that, that distance. We, our, if I recall reading, we're going to insist upon face masking from elementary on up, correct?
Yeah, I, I can add too, we have to because that's in the M.D.
Yeah, that's, I was gonna say, yeah.
That's a, that's a regulation, it's basically law from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services.
Yeah, so, so all of our students will be required to wear face, besides staff, will be required to wear face masks all day long. So I would just recommend parents to get their students practicing, wearing a face mask for extended periods of time, I guess, so they can start getting comfortable with it.
I'd want to clarify that because I believe it's that some facial covering, some people might have a medical necessity that they can't wear the mask and they'd be wearing a facial shield.
But the majority of the.
Majority will be wearing masks, but it's not that you're mandated to wear a mask, it's some type of facial covering.
It's, it's, it's a mask, actually the face, the, the shield does not take place of a ma.
Place, yeah, it does not.
It does not take place of a mask, unless there's a medical reason why you can't, then you could have a shield or another. And that's why we also, like, for example, in some of our most fragile students in ACT-18, we do have those flexible Plexiglas. So that could be another way to mitigate when a student can't wear, and that's why, you know, the mask, so that's why we also purchase them with our committee, and we purchased, I think, I, I don't know the number, I'm just going to throw out like a, a, 700 of them, and I don't know that they're all in, but we initially, I think it was 100, then another 100, then another 500, and that was so that we can individualize situations in the building when those kinds of things occur, or if we have smaller, you know, smaller rooms and things like that. So we are providing multiple options with the PPE to have a backup, but yes, and then when it comes to staff, we, I don't think we really have anyone that's come forward, but a staff member would also have that according to the law because of a health reason, but they would have to go through HR just to get that document.
And my one question would be, because we have seen on occasion, it's, it's become very politicized about wearing a face mask, and we have people who are anti-face masks for a variety of reasons. What, what are our plans for those parents who come up and say, without any kind of evidence, or maybe, I know we say they have to have a doctor's note, but they, they could potentially, you know, find somebody who was willing to write a note? If we start to see a large portion of student populations, I doubt it would happen. I'm just theorizing, you know, that the potential is there for people to come up with reasons why their student can't wear a face mask in the school environment that may not.
Yeah, we would have to, just like even in a non-COVID situation with Americans with Disabilities Act, if there's another thing that someone had or whatever and they provide a documentation, you know, we would have to allow for that exception if we, you know, I mean, obviously if, if someone, with students, we have to be very cautious, you know, we generally trust their parents that they're bringing it, but again, you know, if it's a medical doctor that says the accommodation, but we would look at it, our staff would look at it, and whether if it's in the special ed staff through an IEP, or it'll be our nurses, our nurses would review it and they would give us, you know, recommendations. If, if there was some issue that was occurring, we'd have to look at that, but if people are just refusing, well, then they can't enter the building, just because they're, you know, just so that everyone knows, and I've talked to our attorney on that, just like here today, we appreciate all our people in the audience that are, and they know that that's the requirement to enter the building. So we can review that if that becomes an issue. I haven't been aware, made aware of any problem, but we understand that we don't have large numbers of students.
Yeah, we don't, we, we haven't really encountered that yet. My, my only questioning about it is, is I, I, I know a number of people who had a doctor write a note for them to get tinted windows because they had an eye condition. It wasn't legitimate, it was, it was, and there was a bunch of people running around with illegally tinted car windows when it was illegal to have them in the front windows.
I think if somebody comes in with a doctor's note, then we have to accept the.
Then we have to accept it, right.
If somebody says, I'm not wearing a mask because I don't.
I just want to make sure that we're not going to be legally liable in any way for, you know, allowing, and, and we start to see an uptick, somebody tells somebody else who doesn't want to do it either, hey, go here and you'll get a note, kind of thing.
Okay, great. Mrs. Farage, thank you very much. We appreciate you.